So I'm gonna go ahead and start the meeting. This is the special town council meeting of August 17th. And I believe we have everybody here from the town council.
Here, I just don't know what to do. You can do what you want to do.
Obviously, Nick here.
Yeah, Nick just signed on. He is here. And I'm still signing more people on. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so we have a very limited agenda tonight. Basically, we've got the STOP 24 and then the sewer agreement. So we're gonna start with STOP 24. STOP 24, the town council needs to make a decision as to whether we want to proceed with that. We had a recommendation from Global. I think everybody on the town council has seen that. And basically, my recommendation is that the town council consider alternate two, which is the HOPE access deck boardwalk. As our end of the basic bid. The Trex boardwalk's a bit more expensive. The all wooden boardwalk is also a bit more expensive. And basically, the other option we have is to clear loose debris from the hillside and clear and grub and restore the hillside. And I guess my thought is that we can do just the structural work and landscaping work we can consider doing at a later time. We can even consider having volunteers along with Park Department maybe working on that and save the town some money. Basically, that's my thought on that.
Bob, just so I know, what was option two that you said?
Alternate two is a thing called the HDPE access deck boardwalk.
Okay.
And basically, that is a plastic ramp that can be removed in the winter time so that hopefully we can prevent any damage with that. Actually, we have Jeff Olman's here who could talk to us a little more about that, too.
Hey, Bob, yeah, it's Nick and maybe Jeff is answering that. Is that the same blue board that Michigan City is using?
Yes.
Yeah. Jeff, do you know, does that come in any other color that's more natural?
Yeah, it does come in a sand color. It basically comes in blue or it comes in a sand color. Sometimes they use the blue color if you want to distinguish it and make it stand out more. But there is a sand color that would match the beach a little better.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I would definitely suggest the sand color.
I second that.
Hey, Bob, this is John Coker. How much money, total money, do we have available? We got $100,000 from the grant and $100,000 from the town. Then did I rewrite that the Park Department would be willing to transfer $60,000 over to us?
That is true, yes.
Yeah. I speak that he buy votes John Wall and that. And with $60,000 from the park, we have $60,000 from Riverboat and $50,000 from CCD, which would total 170. That would cover the 223 plus, if it works out to be 20,000, as has been at least requested from Global. John Wall's hoping it can be less. That would be our take, less the 100, would be about 143. Now, another one thing that we have to consider or have to realize is that I'm not convinced that we're gonna get the money from the coastal grants people ahead of the, you know, the contractor's not gonna be willing to wait.
Yeah, you don't, hey, just to clarify, just to clarify that, the invoices are submitted on a quarterly basis. So that's what Save the Dunes does as the administrator. They submit the documentation to show what expenditures have been completed. And once that's sent to them, then you receive a check. So yes, there is a bit of upfront that you're paying, but you're also not waiting until the tail end to get repaid.
Thank you.
So the question is, how much can we get for the money we'd have available? What do we have to cut out?
The thought is, the thought from Budget and Finance is that we can do it with what we have.
Including sprucing up the hillside and taking out the trash out there?
Well, yeah, my recommendation would be to not do that. And to let that.
But how much would that cost then? What you're proposing?
We've got the, or...
Yeah, Jeff is on here.
Jeff, are you on there? Nick, you got that number?
Yeah, so the minimum, so minimum not taking any of those alternatives. So that would be not cleaning up the hillside, not, you know, going with the bare minimum for the, for any sort of walkway. That gets you at 220, 220,300. However, if you included, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, if you included the HDPE access deck boardwalk that we were just mentioning, that's 23,400. So it'd bring a total to 243,000. We're going back and forth, $700.
Well, Nick, I think that that HDPE access deck actually decreases the cost by 3,000. So we're down below 200,000.
Yeah, and that's what my question is. Go ahead, Jeff.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the, basically, the base bid is 243,700. And then if you select alternate A2, that's a deduction of 23,400. So that would total, have a total price that you would be awarding of 220,300. If you were to, you know, the other alternates, if you were to add in the alternate B and C, which is for the restoration of the hill, you're adding another 33,000 and 37,000, which that's what the contractor to do. And what Bob is saying is you could also look into having the Parker's department do it. You could, you know, go on your own and look into, you know, other alternatives for restoring that hillside. It's not, that part's not binding to, you know, achieving the goal of the project. So it's kind of something you can do outside of the scope of the project.
And then one other alternate is alternate D, which involves restoring the existing parking area with new asphalt striping and signage. But that again, could wait until later. By spending the minimum, we do guarantee that we'll get the 100,000 grant. And the rest of it's gonna come out of our pocket, whether it's now or later.
That's right.
Couple of comments, Bob, in terms of now and later. The landscaping work and the plantings, similar to what the Park Department has done before, you wouldn't need to use the same level of contract or that we're forced to use with this grant project dollars. So you could conceivably save some money on any of those alternates. In addition, on the paving, one of the paving contractors in town to do the community grant project, it would be considerably less to have him run down there and fix that pavement. So on both of those notes, you'd get those done for considerably less than what those alternates would lead you to believe.
Sounds good.
Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to, this is Coker. I'll move that we adopt Bob's recommendation of doing.
Option two.
Yeah.
Yeah, alternate A2.
Okay. I'll second that. This is Nick.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay. Alright. So it's with great trepidation that I introduce the second agenda item, and that's the sewer agreement. This is a sewer agreement between Michigan City Sanitary District and the town of Long Beach. Last week at our meeting, we agreed to sign the agreement. However, it was my mistake that we agreed to sign an agreement that I didn't realize had been changed since I looked at it last. That agreement said that residents on the south side of Lake Shore Drive had to hook up to the new sewer system within three years. That's my mistake that we signed that. Fortunately, we hadn't returned that to Michigan City yet, and we have an opportunity to rectify that situation. New sewer agreement has been on the website for the last couple of days. And just to summarize the change, this new sewer agreement says that no one, except for people who are now on Pump and Hall, have to hook up immediately. The rest of the people can decide when they want to hook up. So that's the change from what we agreed to sign last week. That's sort of the synopsis of it. I guess discussion?
And that's the only change, right, on paragraph number five? This is Coker, paragraph five on the agreement.
That is the only change, yes.
I move to adopt the revised change.
I second that. Mary Lou?
Just for clarity, this is Chris. Probably the motion should be to rescind last week's approval for the prior version and to adopt or approve and authorize Dr. Lemaitre to sign on behalf of the council the agreement, the form of agreement that's before you today.
Well, I withdraw my motion and reintroduce the motion as to what Chris just said. We rescind the former agreement that we signed last week and adopt the new revised motion with the change there for when the folks can hook onto the sewer if they're choosing.
I second that.
As submitted in the revised agreement.
So we have a motion and a second to revise and to adopt the new agreement. Any discussion?
Yep, this is Nick. So the language that you're adopting here says it changes it to, basically, unless mandated to do so by the town or other governmental authority. So the town doesn't have an interest, or at least I don't have an interest in mandating that someone hook up if they don't need to. But, you know, when this gets turned over to Michigan City, they don't have to check with us to, or let me ask it this way. Does Michigan City have to check with the town before they mandate that?
Under the ordinances, under state statute, they would not because they're actually the governing authority. However, the agreement with the town is that they are going to defer to what the town wants. That reference, essentially, is no matter what anybody wants or thinks, if the county were to determine. Now, again, they're never gonna put it in writing. We've asked them before. The only scenario is where they're gonna mandate is if there's a failed system. So they're not going to grant, you know, if there's a... Then they would, but at this point, everything is covered. So that is what that language is intended to cover. But statutorily, the county could, they could mandate.
And the county, I mean, I'm concerned with the county. I mean, they got us to where we are today. But can Michigan City say or by themselves make a unilateral decision and just say, we want to hook up, you know, all of South Shore? We are mandating that all South Side Lake Shore Drive owners that aren't connected, connect? Without the town's approval or say?
My opinion would be that they could statutorily, but for our agreement. So otherwise, they are not.
But this agreement, but you're, so just so I'm crystallizing it, because I'm hearing you're saying they can, but they can't. Statutorily, the county can, but I guess I'm more interested in Michigan City probably having more interest to do it sooner.
The only way to protect, I think, for them not to is to say that specifically, that they are not going to.
And do we have any understanding or knowledge in conversation with Michigan City if they'd be willing to entertain a language like that?
That language, that is not, we've been back and forth. There's been multiple drafts of this. Statutorily, they are the decision maker in terms of running that, but they get to have their agreement, the financing agreement and the terms of the to attempt to just give the town. So that agreement is that they have zero interest and are not going to mandate anybody unless the town mandates it.
So Bob, if I understand, if I live on Lake Shore Drive and I don't hook up right away, it's kind of like when you're 65 and you don't get a prescription plan and then I decide at 70, I'm gonna pay a penalty each month. Isn't that the way the sewer system works?
No, there would be no penalty. The penalty section is only for new properties, for new residents that are not hooked up now. But an existing residence, when this sewer is put in, the stubs will be put in for every residence that exists on Lake Shore Drive.
Okay. And then those people will have to pay the Department of Water Works a sewer fee each month, even though they may not be hooked in?
They have to.
No.
But they pay the capital cost, they pay for the construction of it, not the use of it. The use, there's two different things, use and construction. This agreement is saying that all Lake Shore Drive, whichever side you're on, pays construction costs.
Okay. Because in the Cove and Hidden Shores, we pay Department of Water Works in addition to Long Beach Water. So we pay that each month to the sewer.
Right. Yeah. It'd be just like that.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
Yeah, this is Nick. I mean, it's related to the agreements. So I think these questions are still fair at this point. I know a lot of us have gotten a lot of feedback from a lot of individuals, and that's what democracy is. And it's important that we listen to all of that. You know, in the last meeting, I didn't vote in favor of the agreement because, and I'll try to articulate this point a little bit better. When, in the prior council of which, Bob, you and I were members of, you know, we were looking for a solution for, you know, two things. One, we had prior interest from the community at large that they were interested in sewers from the comprehensive plan. So we knew, we had at least some data point that said, let's reopen the discussion on sewers, right? We knew that going into, even prior to a year ago, two or three years ago, when we started having conversation about the Michigan City sewers. We knew that, yes, we had a problem that was the catalyst that started by the county, right, to propose a moratorium. You know, and then it caused issues for mainly the north side of Lake Shore Drive. However, we also know that, you know, while there may be some current homes that are in peril or have failed septic systems, you know, we know that in discussions with the building commissioner, Larry, that there's many other homes that could potentially have failed septics. And if you went so far as to possibly test more septic systems, you might uncover more potential problems. So it's bigger, it's bigger than just a few homes, which I know a number of residents have sort of characterized it that way. And I think that, you know, at the time when we voted to proceed with engineering studies and the cost to go to start getting the train down the road, we were under the auspices of the understanding that we were trying to do it in a way that provided a solution, but that didn't put a burden or penalize those that were on the hillside. And we went into it thinking that we could do the project without the south end having to pay. At least that was my impression when we first ventured into it. And then, and then we had, you know, the agreement and then the financing came along with Michigan City. And it requires more participation. And the only way to get the sewer in is with more participation. And part of the challenge, too, and I hear this frustration, is that, and part of it, I think, is, I don't wanna call it a misstep, but I think it was probably a little early for engineering costs because everyone wanted to know, how much is it gonna cost me a month, right? They wanted to know that. And at the time, they didn't have a fine tooth, find enough point to know how much it was truly gonna cost. And so I think some preliminary numbers were thrown out that were closer to $100 a month. And then here we sit today, we think it's closer to $130 a month. So there's frustration from residents saying, well, wait a minute, how do we, how do we know it's not gonna increase even more than what it is today? So you've got that also going. And the reason, the reason for my hesitation at the last meeting was because I feel like we started down this path and I feel like, had I known today what I knew, you know, had I known now what I knew, you know, then, when we're making that decision, I don't know that I would have proceeded with approving a sewer in the way the construct we have it today. What I would like to see, and I know there's a heavy lift and a heavy burden and a lot of time and a lot of resources into getting the engineering done and completed and financing and all the parties to agree to even just do this one section that we're talking about, which is a big, which is a large section. I also know that the sewer that's being installed is also supportive of the rest of the town. If we were to do the rest of the town, it's not like anything we're investing in today is gonna be a back step later. So I guess what I'm saying is I'd be much more inclined to continue down the path that we're on if I knew that we were, and I have a large interest in doing the whole town. I know that there's many residents who have septic systems that work fine, but that's not always gonna be the case. I know that, you know, we've, just as we didn't know the county was gonna come in and put a moratorium, who's to say that they're not gonna do that for all of Lake Shore Drive? Right? And so people who are upset now about paying, they may be relieved in a year or two down the road if the county comes in and says, well, all of you need to then connect. And if we didn't have a solution here, we'd be in trouble. So I look at the long term, the longevity of the community. I think it's a positive from an environmental standpoint. So I'm supportive of a sewer going in. I just, I would like to see, I would like to see us start to pursue, and including this as the first phase. And I know we've been transparent to say that all along, that we viewed this very much as first phase or phase one and that we did have an interest in the others. But we, you know, it's a slower moving train if you're only, if you're looking at that whole town. But I know, I know that, you know, the town previously looked into it and, you know, in kind of the early, what was it, 2006 or sometime thereafter, there was prior interest in looking at the town. So I know that there's at least some level of work that was done to do that. So it shouldn't be a heavy burden. So I guess what I, a long way of saying, I'd be more in favor and supportive continuing to pursue where we're at. If I knew we were gonna start right on the heels of this to proceed with giving Haas the approval to work with and, you know, do the proper engineering, knowing that for the rest of the town, it's probably gonna take a better part of a year to complete. I get that. But at least we've started that process. So that way, we can then look at sewer in the entire town as a whole. And I don't know that it's gonna lower the cost necessarily for those on Lake Shore. We don't know that because we don't know what the complete cost would be for the entire town. You could, anyone on this call could probably do some back of the napkin math and, you know, kind of be close or at least in the wheelhouse. But I just, I would like to see us move forward as a complete. I think that would eliminate a little bit of the issue, too, that we're seeing where it feels like one section of the town is being penalized over another. So I think that would help that. So that's where I'm at. And so I guess it's more of a statement than less questions because I, I mean, I still have other questions about cost, but we're pretty far along here.
Well, Bob, this is Coker. I hear Nick, and I totally agree with what he's saying. I do know, because I've sat into in numerous, numerous meetings with Haas and the town, the sanitary district people. And this is just, but step one, as Nick said, phase one. I know the state is gonna wanna look into, okay, we're gonna fund Lake Shore Drive. What about the rest of the town? And Haas Engineering is already, from that earlier study they did back in the mid 2000s, have a, not a preliminary engineering report, but they have the rest of the town already mapped out for possible sewers. And so a lot of that work has already been done. There'd still be a lot of engineering to do if we elected to go for the whole town. But I agree with Nick. I think we ought to have the plans in place. I said this during the election. We should have plans in place in the event that we are mandated to go forward. Because if we're mandated to go forward, as you can see, how long it's taken just for Lake Shore Drive to get where we are now, we've gotta be planning ahead, not planning behind. And so, yeah, I fully support what Nick said there. And, but you gotta start someplace. And environmentally and everything else, this is, I think, will be a good plus for the town.
John Wall?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a couple of comments along the lines of what Nick's been talking about. I had a conversation with Haas Engineering last Friday specifically about the history of sanitary sewers in our town. He didn't have a tight timeframe, but he said it was roughly 15 years ago when they were first approached to do some engineering work for a study of sanitary sewers throughout the whole town. The water works issues with making water improvements based on when the town had to discontinue using the pump house and discontinue using the water intake took precedence back then. So they, the town decided to concentrate on the water system improvements, which, you know, was a sizable infrastructure investment at that time. So they, you know, the town council decided not to pursue the sanitary district study anymore, the sanitary sewer study anymore. He did tell me that, you know, under the water department improvements, we were able to be the operator and thus the party that approached SRF funding and got that for the water, our water works improvements. We would have to do the same kind of construct on any sanitary work because the Michigan City Sanitary would be the operator. So we would go through them with the SRF, much similar to what we've already done. And the language in the agreement moves us toward that already. So I would say, what Haas told me was the information, he's gonna dig through his files, the information he's got on the work that was already done for the whole town, he has. And he will get some more details to us between now and the public hearing. He thinks he's gonna be in the neighborhood of, you know, months, not years, to finish that study. And we could potentially be on the hook for maybe 10, 10 or so. And don't hold anybody to these numbers, but something less than 15,000 or 20,000 to complete that study. There would be considerable engineering costs in the actual engineering work which that would be rolled into the SRF funding for the whole project if we get the whole town. I'm in favor again of, I've said this for a long time. I think sewers in the whole town is the right thing to do. Some of these septic systems that are relatively new do filter out the solids and that sort of thing. But from a technical standpoint, there's an awful lot of chemicals and things that wind up in our drinking water by virtue of septic systems. So I think environmentally, you know, I'm a child of the 60s. I think environmentally, it's the right thing to do for the whole town. I'd be in favor, as Nick has mentioned, of starting that, restarting that process again. You know, our predecessors 15 years ago thought it was the right thing to do, and I still do. I think we need to get that process moving. I don't think 10,000 or so, or even if it's 15 or 20, is money not well spent to go ahead and do the study on, or finish the study on the whole town. I'd like to get that ball rolling as soon as we can and continue that process.
I have, I have some concern that we, I can see people on here who are from both sides of Lake Shore Drive. But my concern, not about the project, but that there are gonna be people here, since I have not, we have not sent out any letters and emails don't necessarily guarantee that we hit everybody there or if they didn't, it doesn't go to spam or somewhere else. And I'm concerned that we're gonna have people who are saying, you are charging me $130 for 40 years? And I heard nothing about this? So maybe we, you know, this is not about the vote for or against the sewer project. But I think we need to, and I think I'd like to talk, like Chris, to tell me, I realize we can't guarantee a price. But, you know, if we're talking about $130 a month or thereabouts, and we're talking about 40 years or thereabouts, then...
then we should probably be sending out something and trying to save money, but I think this one is one that we got to spend the, the money. And thus there's another way that we can do that. I don't think we can go to door to door.
Bill, this is, this is Coker again, but George Schmidt and I, early on, a year or so ago, sent letters to every single person on Lake Shore Drive and they, they're aware, everybody on Lake Shore Drive is aware of this. So this isn't, this isn't a, a big surprise to anybody.
Well.
Now, this discussion has been going on for three years now.
I understand.
And in defense of the price creep, you know, the initial low monthly price was when we were looking at doing pressure, pressure sewer. But the town, pretty, or at least the Lake Shore Drive homeowners pretty much unanimously rejected a pressure system in terms of, instead of the gravity, and instead went for a gravity system, which of course necessitates the lift stations, which increases the cost.
One, one quick comment on that, Bob. The private costs, if you have a pressure system, each homeowner's private costs are considerably greater because they have to have a special pump, macerator pump. So they're independent or, or, you know, they're mutually exclusive. You've got costs involved for the private homeowner if you went with a pressure system. That applies for the whole town as well.
That is true.
Yeah. And just to be, I mean, we, we throw around a lot of numbers and, and, and I think that's what causes a lot of concern too, because again, we still don't know, we still don't know the final dollar amount today, as we said. We, we think it's around the, the 130 mark. I guess we don't know, could that dollar figure change? I mean, I, I assume it's not going to go down, but seems, seems like that's going to, that could change or, or stay put. Then I hear, you know, Bill mentioned 40 years, but I thought SRF's loans were 20 years. So I, I didn't think it was 40 years down the road, or am I wrong?
Part of it's 20, I think, and the other part's 30 or 35. I think the lift stations are on a, on a shorter term.
Yep. Okay.
And that, that's all laid out in that, that sender report.
Yeah.
And, and so, you know, there will be notice and I, I'm not arguing, you know, Bill's points in terms of, you know, again, notice and, and information as a public is key, that the sanitary district, everything is going to be followed according to what the required procedures are and the notice and the public hearing on that. And I want to add one little, I, I sense Nick's hesitancy with regard to the who can say and require. So this part is up to us and, and so I want to make that clear. The sanitary district could have the authority under the statute, but they are deferring 100% to the town's wishes. And so, you know, that language that says other governmental a, a, authority is intended to be the town. And so, you know, if, if that assists in this, you, the sanitary district is deferring to the town. So if you, you want to amend that language to say, you know, the town and/or, or, or LaPorte County, or LaPorte County Health Department, you can do that. You can leave it as is. You know, there, there is no intent to, to dupe anybody here, I guess, for lack of a better description. So I, I just want to make sure that it's clear in your mind, Nick, as you read it and, and who, who gets to, to require or to, to hook up.
And Bill, can I have you add to the agenda for the next town council meeting? Engineering study regarding septic system for the rest of the town.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Coker, aye.
It's unanimous, opposed?
And this is Nick. I, I, yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm still, I'm still in, in the, in the no category here.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right. I think that's the end of our agenda. I'll open it up for public comments. However, we have a APC meeting that starts in 25 minutes. So if we have a lot of comments, I may, we may end up having to end the meeting sooner. But if you want to make a public comment, go ahead and raise your hand. Mr. Rizzi. You have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I, I have a question about.
His address. Oh yeah, you got to give your address.
Okay. Zafar Rizbi, 1636 Lake Shore Drive. And I have a question about, about number, item number 18, which says each party will hold the other party harmless for any losses, expenses, damages, injury, blame resulting from the party's negligent, intentional or unlawful conduct or substantial violation of its duties under this agreement. I think we are giving blank check to e, each party regardless of they are to something intentionally wrong and we cannot claim any damages. I think that's not right way to do the business.
Chris, do you have any comment about that particular one?
I don't.
You don't?
No, I, it, it, I don't think it's interpreted that way, so.
Yeah.
So will you please tell me that how is that interpreted? But then it's clearly saying intentional or unintentional or unlawful.
I assume this is more standard language for these kinds of agreements. Is that right, Chris?
It, it is, and it's, again, I'm, I'm not, I'm not here to give Mr. Rizbi, I guess, legal advice for lack of a better description, so give me one second, my.
No, I, I'm as a, you know, taxpayer, because I wanted to make sure is if this kind of situation happened, the people who will be holding the bag, I mean, taxpayers. And that's the reason i, is because if somebody is negligent or willfully negligent, that person should be held, held responsible. I mean, that's, that's my, my comments, but, but that's okay, Chris, or anybody do not want to comment, but I want to make sure everybody goes with open eyes that this can come to haunt you. Thank you.
Anybody else have a comment? All right, I'm going to go to the next page here.
And Dr. Lemay.
Yeah. Yes, Chris.
I, I, I want to, I'm sorry, because I, I don't mean to be standoffish with this. I, I, for instance, Mr. Rizbi, it would be the sanitary district holding Long Beach harmless from the sanitary district's intentional or unlawful acts, not blanket for the other. And we would be holding the same, because sanitary district, that, that is, that is standard. And so again, I, I, I'm hesitant to answer, I answer to the public overall, but I'm hesitant to answer to the public for these direct questions because I technically answer to the council. So that's, that's why I hesitate here. But to be clear, this language is, is standard in holding the other harmless for the, the wrongdoer party's actions. That's all that says.
Chris, this is Coker. Wouldn't, wouldn't insurance come to play here somewhere along the line?
Well, of course, a, and then we're getting down the rabbit hole of, you know, whether things are intentional and covered or not. But, but at the end of the day, one, that's always first line of defense, but two, we're not letting the sanitary district off the hook for their bad deeds. The sanitary district is saying in that paragraph that they're holding us harmless for, if they do something wrong, whether it's negligent or intentional, et cetera, and vice versa.
Yeah, I've got a question from Thomas's iPad. And Thomas, you need to unmute yourself.
Okay, I have a couple of questions.
I'm sorry, identify yourself and your address.
This is Thomas King, 2301 Floramond. So a couple of people tonight have invoked environmental considerations as part of this debate. To date, what has the town done to pursue potential grants and other type assistance to the extent that there is an environmental concern? Financial assistance.
I, I don't think there are grants for that, but I have to admit, I haven't looked.
My second point is, in the agreement, the agreement holds everyone on Lake Shore Drive responsible for construction costs, for infrastructure. They may be able to delay hooking up, but they have to pay for infrastructure. I don't see any type of upper limit, but it says they will be responsible for the full cost of installing this line down Lake Shore Drive. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Why is there no upper limit? I mean, some type of protection in terms of, otherwise it sounds like a blank check to me.
Well, we'll have an idea of what the cost is going to be once we get the engineering study.
So once we get the engineering study, if the costs are prohibitive, is that saying that this agreement is potentially null and void? I mean, I, I don't understand how that works. Why would we not put in the agreement something to the effect that pending the upcoming engineering studies, assuming that the range, that we should have some general idea, so what this is going to cost? Why would we not put in the agreement some type of limits, some type of range and say, assuming it's with your, if not, we go back to the drawing board and we come, and we have this conversation again?
Well, I think at some point, we, we have the history of Michigan City sanitary being a upfront partner with the people that they serve, and I think I have no reason to think that they're going to suddenly turn into crooks.
I'm not saying crooks. I'm saying what if Lake Shore Drive collapses at stop 28? What if, you know, construction projects can, the scope can change, can turn on a dime? You know, we've all, we've all dealt with that. What, why would we not build some level of protection in there for all the residents of Lake Shore Drive? And I'm saying this with an eye towards good governance and to Nick's point and other people's point, if this is something that we're going to consider rolling out throughout the town, you know, now's the time to have those conversations.
Do we expect Michigan City sanitary to take the risk of an earthquake?
No, I expect Michigan City, I would expect us to have some protection if these costs, if the engineering study's done and all of a sudden we're not talking about a $10 million project, we're talking about a $20 million project, is there any opportunity for review? For possibly pursuing a, a, a different approach? Whatever that could be.
We wouldn't have to accept the bid.
Because the way it's written right now, it seems to give a blank check.
No, this, this is the basis to be able to move forward and continue down the path for the financing. And so, you know, the sanitary district one needed the, the town's commitment, I, I think as Nick summarized earlier, the, the town has been down this path a few times. Of course, this is the furthest and, and so it's, it's the town's undertaking to commit, one, to pay, if the brakes are halted and the project dumped, the town is responsible for the engineering costs up to date. But until the engineering and, and once that's rolled out at the public hearing, stepped it and the loan is actually taken, right? It's all in process now. So from our position, there is still an opportunity to put the brakes on here if that's what it dictated. However, that, the other portion of this to consider is that's why Mr. Sender did his report and his review based on the, the info and the data, and that's why it was important to understand. And, and some have probably forgotten, when this started, it was done with the thought that all, you know, all 300, for lack of a better description, up and down Lake Shore Drive were wanting to be part of the project. And that has changed significantly for various reasons and feedback, et cetera. And so, you know, now it's, it's not those mandates. So, you know, I, I, I think that while I understand your concern, that the next hurdle is that public hearing, and that's the important one in terms of what that cost is going to be. And, you know, if there's somehow, we do have a basis based on Mr. Sender's report and the information that has been there, been submitted to the town and shared with everybody previously.
So now.
Different, no different than any other construction project. We won't know the hard costs until the actual bids are in. The, the engineering estimates are exactly that, they're estimates, and that's what this, all this financial information is based on.
So you're telling me the best time to find the engineering reports and once we get the costs, because nobody's been able to answer, and John respectfully last week asked me to read their grid, I don't see a price anywhere. So assuming that these prices come in, if it's something unforeseen, materially unforeseen, we have recourse.
You can always cancel the project time before you award the bids.
I'm being reminded that we have to limit comments to three minutes. So Abby Neary?
First off, I'd like to say.
Address.
Oh, 2019 Lake Shore Drive. I appreciate Mr. Dofuniax's comments about acknowledging this to the residents of Lake Shore Drive, because as I've been raising support against the sewer project, most residents are not aware of this despite the fact that it's been going on for several years. So I do think a public notice is important. Second question is, is there were lots of commentary raised about amending the language to be clear. Now, Mr. Willoughby cited that in his interpretation, it would be the town saying that the, that all residents need to hook up or South Side residents, but there's no clarity on that language. You just, or you just approved it four to one. Is there any consideration for amending that language to make it clear about who has the right to enforce additional residents to hook up to this, to the sewer system?
Oh, Chris, do you think that language should be changed in that? Now, I'm sorry, you, you're talking about who should hook up?
Right, because you said, it said the sanitary or the town council or any governing body could require us to hook up at any time. That's how the language was amended versus the, originally it said three years. And so then, Mr. Willoughby said, oh, well, the implied sentiment is that the town gets to make that decision, but that's not actually in writing.
No, that wasn't implied. That's actually in an agreement between the town and Michigan City sanitary. So that is in a different agreement. Am I correct, Chris?
No, the agreement, this is the agreement.
Okay.
The resolution that we previously passed is the sanitary district or the town asking the sanitary district to incorporate it within the district for these purposes. If the, this is merely that the town does or other governmental entity who has that authority. It's the, the sanitary, as I said earlier, I'll say again, the sanitary district is going to defer to what the town wants here. If you want more specific language, then you should have more specific language. If you're okay as written, then it, it is written according, in accordance with the state statutes.
So state statute says that Michigan City sanitary would have to get the approval of.
That hasn't changed from day one.
So that's state statute, so, so we're good?
Right. State statute could, or the sanitary district can, the health department can, under separate, their own regime, this is written to where, unless the town or other government entity, because that's how the statutes are written.
So they don't have to.
EBA.
It could be EBITA sanitary district, it could be, I mean, it could be anyone, any governmental.
Anyone. It can't be anyone. You have to have authority under the statutes.
Okay. And then last question, and then I'll, I'll defer is, are the engineering costs going to be, and the bids going to be presented at the public hearing on September 17th?
Say that again, Abby.
Are the engineering, the, the bids for the cost of the project going to be presented at the upcoming public hearing on September 17th?
No, the, the, what you're going to see on the 17th is the preliminary engineering report. Preliminary means it's preliminary. The final engineering, once the pro, the engineering process continues, will be, the final engineering will be done. At that point, you'll know what the ultimate engineering costs are. You will not know what the bid prices are until the project goes out for bid. That's not going to happen for a little while yet.
Okay, so we won't, we still won't know the cost even at the time where we get the public hearing, which I heard you mentioned was the last stop time that we could potentially stop this. I think actually Mr. Willoughby said that.
But I think I'll, I'll make myself clear one more time, Abby. This project will be bid, at the point where the bids aren't taken, there will be an opportunity to stop the project if the costs are prohibited, as with any other construction project. The preliminary engineering report that you're going to have access to for the, for the public hearing is the engineering work that's been done to date. And then they'll give us some estimates about what they think, and we've already gotten most of that information. Then the bid process will occur. And then at that point, you'll have specific information from the contractors about what the costs are, and then we'll be able to get a, a revised version from Carl Sender's office about specifically what the capital costs. about specifically what the capital costs will be, and what each homeowner will have to incur.
And, and who gets to determine what price threshold is prohibitive?
The town council.
The parties. The parties to the agreement.
Which includes every resident of Lake Shore Drive, now that you've turned us over to the Michigan.
No, we have representative government here, Abby, so the town council will make that decision.
Okay.
Okay, I've got one, room for one more comment. Rich Jurcic, and we have five minutes, Rich, so. Unmute yourself, Rich. Hold it, do it again, I'm sorry, I screwed you up.
Okay.
Good, go ahead.
I agree with John and Nick. It is not a matter of if we get sewers, but when. We do not want to be in a position where a government agency mandates our sewers. Interest rates are at a historically low level. We need to lock in now. There are 2% through September 30th, 2020. I'd like to see a phase in approach and include the whole town of Long Beach, which I believe there'll be savings involved. Um, so how much for Lake Shore Drive? How much for phase two? How much for phase three? And Haas has already done these studies, so we'll have some preliminary, uh, numbers. But it won't take them long to pull together some more numbers. But I think we're better served as a town when we take this plan comprehensively as a town. I think it's a much better approach than what we're trying to do with just Lake Shore Drive. Even though we have said, it, it's, it's part of the three steps, I think we need to look at it as a whole. Um, that's just my opinion, and I, I agree with Nick and John, and I support the town council.
Okay, I see one more hand. Dr. Michael Athens.
Aye.
Thank you, but again, we have five minutes.
Sure, I wanted to thank the, the, oh, Michael Athens, 1317 Lake Shore Drive. Um, I do appreciate the comments that were just stated. And again, I'm a little confused about why the whole town isn't, uh, helping to pay for the sewers down Lake Shore Drive, since everybody ultimately will benefit. I understand that it may be in phases, uh, going into other parts. But a reminder here is, I own another property where I don't use water or sanitary, and I am required to pay the $88 a month, same as at the house I live in. Even though, and I said, well, I'm not using it, I'm turning it off, I don't take a garbage can out. Why do I need to pay for it? And I'm told it's part of city services, and I'm required to pay, even though I don't use the service. So that's kind of.
I'm a water board, and there are other people in your predicament. And if you have a water tap there, you're obligated to pay because it's capital charges and all the other things. So, and I do have a sewer where I live, so I don't think I need to pay for everybody else's.
Yeah, and Michael, I'm sorry. It's, it's illegal for a community to charge someone for a service that they have no opportunity to use. So we can't charge the rest of Long Beach for a sewer that goes down Lake Shore Drive. That would be illegal.
Oh, okay. Even though it might be part of a comprehensive, and that everybody participates in?
Once they have an opportunity to hook into the system, then they can be charged for it. But until they have the opportunity, we can't charge them.
And even for the infrastructure?
Particularly for the infrastructure.
Okay, well, you've clarified that for me. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up.
Chuck Lozard, down at the bottom.
Hello, Chuck Lozard. I'll be quick.
Go ahead, identify yourself.
Chuck Lozard, 2015 Lake Shore Drive. Hear me?
Yep.
Yep, okay. Um, I had, uh, we put in some parking out front of our house. I had to get some variances. I had to send registered letters to people within 300 feet of my property to let them know what I was doing. I think that would be very prudent for you guys to do the same thing, is to send registered letters to all the residents, just like we have to do as citizens, to get a project, to, to let everyone know exactly what this project is. I'm with Abby Neary, I've talked to several of my neighbors. They had no idea this was happening, none whatsoever. You guys rely on a, of people going to a website, and they didn't even know the website existed. Now they do, which is a good thing. They were educated. But there is a lot of part-time residents up here that don't, aren't connected to it like the rest of us that live around here. You've got to let them know. There's a, there's a element of not being transparent with a lot of people right now. That's not a good thing for government to be at right now, is being not transparent, or having the appearance of not being transparent. So I'm just saying, you know, I, I think you guys need to officially let people know where you're at right now. And not through an email, not through a website, but actually through a registered letter, just like the rest of us had to do.
Yeah, I've got Ed Gosling, you've got two minutes, Ed. You have to unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm driving. Bob, thank you. I just wanted to touch on something that you brought up about not being able to charge residents if they don't utilize, uh, you know, what's being brought to the city. And I think, you know, I wrote a letter to John Coker, and John, thank you for bringing up a couple of those points last week. But my concern is that a lot of the costs here are not necessarily directly tied to the Lake Shore Drive residents. And specifically, you know, much of Lake Shore Drive is in a dilapidated condition without much useful life, and yet, the entire town, through this process, will, will, will get a brand new Lake Shore Drive. And using the, you know, preliminary cost estimates from your 2018 letter, you know, that's a million to a million two, just for repaving, for which the entire town will receive benefit. You know, same thing when, when, you know, I understand that this system is being oversized, so it's not sunk costs into just Lake Shore Drive only, that the entire town can utilize it. You know, Lake Shore Drive residents are, are bearing the cost of the overengineering to accept future use. And I, again, inherently, I'm for sewers, but I just think that the cost structure and the responsibility to pay is, is out of whack here. And, um, you know, a question was asked that John Wall answered, if there were grants for any portion of the work, specifically the road, which is subject to, uh, you know, a surface, surface transportation grant, which is an 80% match, where the government pays for 80% of the cost of the road. And John was correct in stating that the current grant that you have for the, the roads that will be redone are specifically for that project because the application process does require that you identify the scope of the work in the specific areas that would benefit. You know, again, I, I think there's, there's an opportunity to get portions of this work paid for from a grant. And frankly, I think those portions that benefit the town as a whole should be shared by the town as a whole. I think it's only fair.
Okay. All right, I don't see any other comments. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. I heard at least three.
Over, aye.
Good night, everybody.